Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that Clerk Wykoff, please call the roll. We could just say all seven are here.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present in establishing a quorum are Councilmembers Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, you please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, fair, honest, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Has anybody signed up to speak this evening? Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the council? Okay. So you can... Oh, there's nothing to be sorry about. No, you don't need to sign up. So before you start speaking, I have to read some things, but you can come up and get comfy. Okay. So thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Public comment is a limited public forum. Spoken public comment is limited to in-person comment only. Written comments can be emailed to the city at an email address with the city clerk and must be received by 4:00 PM. Written comments received at the council meeting will be distributed to the council at the council meeting. And your comments this evening need to be limited to three minutes. We'll go ahead and put a timer on the screen, and I will let you know that I'm ad-libbing this because I read the wrong part of the script. Before you start speaking... I'm sorry. Before we start the timer, I'm going to just ask you to just state your name and your association with the city, and then we'll start the timer. So go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sherry Novak, long-term resident. I live on South Lakely. I've been coming because I had an issue with zoning that had changed on my property, and I didn't realize it. It's been a mess. The city's planning is working with me. And so far, every time I talk to you guys, at first I was freaking out, and because what they came at me with was really strong, and I didn't know where it was coming from. But when I talked to you and Planning Department and everybody, I still don't know exactly why they came on so strong, but I think it's gonna hopefully be worked out. But I was one of those who got threatened with the $250 a day fine for a building that's been there over 100 years. So, and, you know, and I got the... It seemed like the city really wants me to tear it down, not you, but staff, maybe just because it's old. But I don't know. Anyway, we are working on it, and I'm going to the Planning Commission meetings, and I'm coming here. And I know that we're doing this big change right now in vision and planning, and I hope that some of these issues are addressed. And it is kind of a fear that a lot of people have, even though they're not here, I work in town, talk to everybody, that if zoning changes, something happens, they don't want to be forced off their property or have to tear something down that was unforeseen, you know? And $250 a day makes sense. If I was pouring gasoline on the street and I was horrible and wouldn't stop, but for a building that's been there, it's not dilapidated, it's not falling down, and it just really scares people when that happens. So maybe we can work on steps. We don't come at people with that first. Maybe, like way down the line, if they're a jerk and it's hazardous, we all... I don't want to be out of compliance. I don't want to be a thorn. I don't, you know, I just don't want to tear my building down.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, guys, for listening.
Thank you, Sherry. All right. Anybody else? I'm not seeing anybody else. We'll go on and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's Councilmember Report. So I'll go ahead and start off with Councilmember Walker.
You got a pick on me. I attended a Snohomish County tomorrow meeting. On a ton to report, there's another update on ADUs. They are talking about expanding Snohomish County tomorrow to six committees, subcommittees. That got pushed out to another meeting for a vote. I think it's pretty interesting, so I'd follow up with other council members about their feelings on that. Sherry, thank you for coming and talking tonight. I just wanted to say that a situation like that, I feel like, is on us as a council and your elected government. It's not on staff in fairness. They're just doing their job. And if there are unforeseen or unintended consequences of policy decisions that we might make, then that's on us. And I appreciate you coming and talking to us and talking to the Planning Commission because that's how we know and we get held accountable and try to make the changes to help. So I appreciate you coming and talking to us. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you. So you mentioned going to additional committees. Is that something that we need to bring forward to the council so that there can be discussions since you're... You know, just because of...
Less formal, I guess. Just to get into, I guess, a feeling or a pulse on it.
Why don't we go ahead and do you have information that you can send forward to staff? And we can go ahead and have on a future council agenda, just for some discussion like that, you can hear from all council members.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd love that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday night was the final game of the season for the Monroe Cricket League, 16 teams from around the whole area. And I'm proud to say that although I wasn't able to attend, I knew that was the mayor, the Monroe Warriors are the champions of the league, so...
That's it. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
There we go. Not a whole lot. Councilmember Beaumont talked about Best of the Northwest in the Seattle Times, and so I started looking in and out, was making sure that I didn't miss anything. Yeah, Monroe's just awesome. So Sky River Bakery took a gold, Crooked Label Brewing, the Farmer's Market, and I was just kind of perusing through here. Tyon Main. We had 2023 with Smiley's Pro-Lube for oil changes. Dream Builders Car Show this year was a charity event that we had here that got a silver on it. And then Heston Door Service, I'm not sure who they are, but they are also in Monroe and got a gold. And I think it's just, if I am missing any, please bring them up. But just how cool it is to live here and to have these companies and also the Monroe's Farm Market, top of the list for the Northwest, is pretty awesome. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
So I'm having... There we go. Okay, I'll stand or sit way back. So that just put a big smile on my face, Councilmember Fisher. I love that. That was just so cool to flip through that magazine and see, yes, all those wins for Monroe. A couple things today that I just wanted to share is I went through the comp plan and asked for it printed out, so I could go through it because I'm an editor by trade. And, you know, it's really a good plan. It's really well done. It's laid out in a very easy-to-understand fashion, and I know how much work this represents by city staff. And I'm just really proud of what has been produced here, and I think it will stand for, you know, the next decade, obviously. But it's just really lovely and just wanted to give city staff a shout out. I know we're in the middle of working on it, and I think November is when we finalize it, but just a Herculean effort and appreciated so much by me. The other thing I wanted to share is tomorrow at about 5:30 after cross-country practice, I am leading a tour of Main Street for Rotary. And Dexter Taylor and Teresa Willard and I are all going to take Rotary on a little downtown walking tour, and they requested this tour. And there's a lot of history in the comp plan as well about, you know, how Monroe got started. And I just encourage all of you to come visit us at the museum. Many people have never been there. It's right across from 7-Eleven, and we're really always trying to share Monroe history with the community, and a lot of people say, oh, yeah, we should come in, and they just never get there. So if any of you want a tour of Main Street or just want to come to the museum, let me know. We can do private tours. We could even have council come down. Many of you have already been there, but it's just another reminder that our history is important. It's in this plan for our next 10 years, and we should all be really proud of it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Awesome. So, yeah, the last council meeting I was at was actually the Arlington Council meeting. I was able to attend back on the 16th for other affairs. The reason why I bring it up is, you know, I hadn't been to another one, you know, in a while, and it was really... One that got me really excited about council chambers in the building that we have going on. You know, theirs is, I think it was redone in the early 2000s, but just was really nice to see kind of a little bit of what it's going to be like when we actually have our own facility back again. And then also got to see here the readout on the, you know, the chief probably knows this, but the regional facility for, gosh dang it.
Blea Academy.
Regional Academy going in and Arlington there, and that's outstanding. I love that. We don't have to go down to...
Buryan.
Yeah, exactly. Down at... It's Buryan? I thought it was Bellevue. The Buryan?
No.
Even better. So that was exciting to see that that was coming around. And then, well, Yvonne Gardo, being on the council there, so stayed around afterwards and was able to connect with a lot of council members up there and got to learn about the things that they were jealous about from us and the things that we were jealous about from them, or at least I was. So that was great. And then just have been busy the last couple weeks. Well, at least we're empty nesters, so it's the first couple weeks of no kids at the Gamble household, and that was the first one that I missed. I had a business meeting over in the Quarter Lane area in addition to dropping off the kid, and then I think all of it finally caught up to me last Tuesday and was just down for the count last Tuesday to even get on, you know, on the screen. So anyway, that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
Well, Sherry, first of all, thanks for coming back. Thanks for speaking your minds. We love that. If everyone would do that, it would be great. I did forget one of my props this evening because I got this cutest little yellow bag of tiny caution tape wristband and a little hard hat and a little tiny shovel that the Public Works guys put together for the market two weeks ago. Pretty awesome. I stole it. I walked away with it, and I was going to show it to you. But anyway, I think it's been so cool that the city has been a constant presence at the Farmer's Market this year, and I know that I've gotten a lot of people who have commented on it, so just want to kudos to you all. Other than that, I got nothing.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scarborough.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda then is item 6.1, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda with Director Worthen, I would say Director Ben.
That works. Hi, everybody.
We're going to go with Ben.
Looking at the extended agenda for 10/8, we have some approval of minutes, new business legislative priorities update from Deborah, she'll be back, federal legislative update again with Ms. Knight, unfinished business, rules of procedures for boards, commissions, and committees by Jody Wykoff, discussion items, good order. So that is the Legislative Affairs Committee. At 7:00, our regular meeting, announcements, presentations. There is no public hearing, correct, Jody? Consent agenda, bills to pay, minutes to approve, payroll, remote power purchase grant from Megan Darro. I'm excited for this. And unfinished business, business, a ordinance repealing ordinance 006, 2012 Automated Traffic Cameras by Liam McCorville, and department reports, parks, human services, community development, and then mayor and administrative.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see there, I'll be absent on that evening. We talked, we discussed the traffic cameras, and so I won't be able to vote on that, but I just wanted to let you know, after we discussed that and had some good discussion last week about that, my feeling is that, yeah, we don't need to do an advisory vote. We can just make the decision ourselves up here. And along with that, going back to, because it was brought up, the fireworks, putting that on an advisory ballot in the future, whatever, I've changed my mind on that, too. I don't think it's worth putting on an advisory ballot because if we're going to make our decision on traffic cameras, we can make our decision on fireworks, so...
Anything else on the extended agenda? All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead with City Administrator Report. Oh, we got one more meeting.
We got one more.
One more slide.
We're going to move out to the 15th. 5:30, we do not have a need for a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting. Sorry about that, folks. Our regular study session will begin at 7:00, where I have a public hearing, our first hearing on the 2526 biennial budget, including revenue projections and the 2025 property tax. And ordinance downtown commercial amendments in first reading from Amy Wright and Mayor Administrative Reports, and discussion items, Monroe 2044 draft document by Kate in Lance.
All right. Any questions or comments on the second slide on the extended agenda? All right. Thank you. Now we'll go on to the Administrator Report.
Okay. This is a repeat from last week. Chamber meeting Tuesday, October 8th at 11:00, 11:30 AM. Representatives Steele and Gaynor are featured speakers. I think we're going to notice, were we going to notice that? If there's enough folks.
Potential quorum.
We can. So it looks like there's enough. Lodging tax grant applications due Wednesday, 10:00 to 4:30 for tourism marketing, marketing and operations of special events and festivals designed to attract tourists. Orca Recovery Day Saturday, October 19th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Councilmember Beaumont, I still don't know what that is exactly, so I'm hoping that you had that question last week, and I hope that got answered. Sky Comish River Park, hosted by the City of Monroe and the Snohomish Conservation District. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring up, you mentioned the comp plan earlier, and the reason it's going so good is because Kate has worked tirelessly on this comprehensive plan. She's here tonight. Her ability to do an unbelievable amount of work is, I'm probably not doing it justice. So the reason it's gone so well is because Kate has worked very, very, very hard. So Amy and Anita and all the other planners, Leanne, are picking up the slack where normally our planning manager would be stepping in, but it's Kate that's driving this comprehensive plan. So we're very fortunate to have all of our good planners, so that was the only other thing I got.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on the City Administrator Report? All right. We're going to go ahead and go on to the mayor's report. First item, we had a request from our senators... Sorry. Asking us to express support for a package that includes funding that our rail crossings would be involved in. Jacob, do you have any additional information you might want to offer on this? No, it's... I, you know, I appreciate the honesty. I've never been in a series of meetings where I've... Yeah. Thank you. So we have these two letters to Cantwell, one to Murray, and I just wanted to clarify, these are... These letters are associated with funding that would allow us for a study on the railroad crossings, correct? Yeah. And so it's consistent with our federal legislative agenda. If nobody has any issues, I'll go ahead and sign these and get them submitted. Okay. Seeing no objection. Okay, cool. So I will go ahead and I'll take care of this. All right. The other thing that you've got there at your spots, I'm not touching that one because that's the one that we'll pass around for signature. As you all are aware, there was some... There were some Facebook posts related to our downtown. And last week, I expressed to you an interest in just writing a letter that staff could include in, you know, Monroe this week or as part of a newsletter that gets sent off to our businesses in Monroe. And what, when I brought that up last week, I explained that the idea of the letter would just be to talk about the fact that, hey, this is what the vision is for the downtown. And this came as a result of community input back in 2008 and then identifying how it is that we as a city have partnered to bring things to the downtown, to reinvigorate the downtown, and then expressing at the end that, you know, things do change over time. And if there are people who are interested in us looking at our downtown zoning and downtown plan again, to please go ahead and send an email off to the council, which I'd get a copy of and staff would get a copy of also. So that's what I have here before you. When I brought this up to you previously last week, you expressed an interest in wanting to sign on to this, and so what you have before you is that letter for your consideration for your signature. I have this magic letter right here that I'm not allowed to touch. I'm touching it. That if you're interested in signing, we'll just go ahead and pass this down. You can sign it, and then we'll have that scanned in and available for however it is we want to use it. So, okay. Does anybody have any concerns? Yes, Councilmember Beaumont.
It's not a concern. It's just a well-done. I think the letter is very well-written, and I really appreciate, on the flip side, the first graph where we talk about historic buildings are a critical resource that contribute to the character and heritage of Monroe, and we'd like to preserve that character. That's what we're fighting for at the Historical Society, and I really appreciate that that's included in this letter. And I think the whole thing is just very friendly and open, and times change, people's vision changes. I think it's very well-done, so...
Thank you. All right. Thank you. So what I'll do is I will go ahead and... Okay. They put it in a nice plastic folder. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and pass this down and just invite you to sign it. Kevin, when it comes down to you, if you just bring it over here, we'll finalize it here. So I could have messed up this one that says downtown letter. All right. So just a couple of other updates then. So letter to legislators, do you like that? Letter to legislators, letter to downtown businesses. I, for your awareness, I did have a conversation with a former downtown business owner that leased property that didn't have the right zoning for the use that they wanted to do in that building. I had that meeting last Thursday, had a good conversation with the person about what led them to leasing the space out, and unfortunately, they have found another location that's outside of Monroe. But the issue they had was just a difference in understanding of what was allowed in that particular zone. If anybody has any questions for me afterwards, I'm certainly willing to talk with you just a little bit more, but we are... That's one conversation that I had. I also have a conversation with another business owner this coming week. It's Thursday afternoon with somebody that is, that has some things up in their windows that we received a complaint on with signage, and so I'll be meeting with that person later this week and staff to listen to what that person's concerns are. So aside from that, I've been working on budget with staff and other operational coordination things throughout last week. Does anybody have any questions for me? Go ahead. We're having Thanksgiving at your house. All the staff and their families and I and their families are coming, so, yeah. We'll get you. We'll get you. We'll get you the number. So, yeah, what I was explaining was just that we had a downtown business owner that unfortunately has left Monroe who had leased space that the use was not allowed in that zone, and there was a difference in understanding when that space was leased. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to contact me if you need to sign that later. Okay. Any other questions for me? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This is discussion item number 7.1, Proposed Code Amendments to MMC Chapter 2222 Downtown Commercial Zoning District in 2022. I'm sorry. We'll go with 22.12 definitions with Amy Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You may recall back a few months ago, we did a public hearing and introduction on the downtown commercial code amendments, and there was some discussion and some concerns, and so the staff heard you, came back with some new changes. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Next slide. Just a reminder of the areas within the downtown planning area. I'll start with the light yellow color. That is the residential neighborhood zone. And then the orange to the right of that is the East Downtown, and then the darker orange is Historic Main, and then the red is the Downtown Promenade. So in going through this with other boards and commissions, there was some confusion as to where those boundaries were, so I just want to walk through that a little bit. Actually, first, we're going to start with the purpose of each of those areas. So the orange, more of a rectangle in the center there, that's the Historic Main. It's the core area specifically for commercial uses that serve the entire community. There's a high concentration of retail, dining, and entertainment functions with professional services and some residential housing, and there's also cultural and recreational facilities within there. And then the promenade is really within that, but it is just the first-floor businesses that face Main Street along that stretch, and the goal there is to promote pedestrian activity and interaction. The confusing part that we are finding is that the second-story businesses aren't really accurately shown on this map, so we'll get to that in a little bit. And then the East Downtown, which is on the east side here, is intended to be an urban village with pedestrian scale, mixed-use, commercial residential functions with parks and open space. So there were some questions, some boards and commissions asking if you know what the Old Tea House is. It's the building on the left in this image. If it was in the downtown, it is not. So I was just trying to show, you know, on the ground floor, what, where that boundary starts, where the downtown begins. It doesn't begin where our signs are. It begins right there at Madison Street. And then from the north, actually, sorry, this is from the east on Main Street, it begins at the railroad tracks. From the north, it also begins at the railroad tracks. And then from the south at, I believe that's McDougal Street, that's where the boundary starts for the downtown. And I was talking before about what the promenade is versus Historic Main. So this image and the series of images that follow show where the promenade is, which is the businesses in red versus Historic Main, which are the ones on the second story. So as long as their front edge, their front door faces Main Street, then it would be considered promenade. So with that and the... So with that and the, the confusion over where those boundaries lie, Planning Commission recommended that we change the map, not change any, you know, any zones for any particular property, but change the way it is displayed. And that's with the image on the right showing an overlay of where the promenade lies. Something that's not on this map, but it is in your packet, is they also wanted a footnote for the promenade, just explaining that it's the first floor businesses facing Main Street. They felt that it would help business owners understand where they belong within the map. So that's one of our proposals tonight. This might look familiar to you. This is something that has, was brought forward to you in the past. It was adding those conditional uses for civic uses in the downtown, sorry, within the promenade, expanding them over there. And we also heard you about hours of operation for those, so you'll notice a footnote eight on each of those conditional uses. And that footnote is on the next slide. So it says conditional uses within the downtown promenade shall be open to the public a minimum of five days and totaling a minimum of 25 hours per week, except holidays or extenuating circumstances. This will only at this time apply to those uses, those civic uses that we're adding. We're not adding it to other uses right now. Another change from the last time we saw this is membership organizations. We have, it's really hard to see, but that A has a cross to it. Currently, we allow as an accessory use in the promenade, membership organizations. So we would be removing that, but then adding membership organizations within the Historic Main as a permitted use. Another change is we have added a new use called Visitor Center. It would be permitted in Historic Main, East Downtown and the promenade. And there's a lengthy definition there on the screen. I won't read the whole thing, but it, it's the definition of what a visitor center is. The next two, there's two new uses that we're proposing, banquet meeting reception hall major and banquet meeting reception hall minor. The, the idea is to allow the major, I'll get to the definitions in a moment, what the difference is, but major would be allowed conditionally in, in Historic Main and the East Downtown. And then minor, Planning Commission recently added us to add it as a conditional use in the residential neighborhood, but also permitted within Historic Main and East Downtown. We're also proposing two new definitions for them. The, we thought long and hard about this and worked with the building department on what, how it would impact somebody that came in with this type of use on the building side. And it's really occupancy. So major would be 50 people or greater. And in those cases, they likely would have to do building upgrades and other things would kick in. And so for major, those would be under conditional uses in the use table. And then minor is 49 people or fewer, as determined by the building official pursuant to the building code. You might have heard some talk in the downtown recently about somebody wanting to open a business like this and this is, this is the use they would follow there is minor. So we're just looking at the pros and cons of what that would mean in the downtown. I apologize, I should say meeting venues in the downtown, not the promenade. We're not proposing them there. And it's, the pros are just loosening regulations and allowing new businesses to come in that area. Song Rivers, it would be major, but they're in the downtown right now. They're not currently, they're existing non-conforming. And some pros might be that they would attend, you know, visit businesses before and after the event. We just don't know. And that's also a con, they might not attend downtown businesses. There's parking constraints, we all know, and they might be closed more often than, than we would like the pedestrian-friendly businesses to be open. Apologies, that's some there twice. All right, so this is our current timeline. We do have some businesses waiting on some of these code changes. Today, October 1st, is today's workshop. We were looking at doing a public hearing in two weeks and then a second reading on October 22nd. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you, Amy. I'm really, really pleased to see this movement. I think it's really, really important to loosen up some of these restrictions and get some, some new blood and some fun stuff downtown. I do agree that some of the businesses, I'm, it's like the chicken and the egg, you know, of the, the sort of gathering places, maybe live music, whatever, some of these events are able to locate downtown. My thought is, you know, hopefully some of the businesses around that will be encouraged to stay open. I know some of them are closed on like a, late on a Saturday night, so I'm hoping that that might encourage some of the businesses downtown to stay open and attract some of that traffic, maybe after a concert or something like that. They would go into a restaurant or go have a drink or whatever. So I'm really happy to see this. I have a question. On the second story businesses, could you explain to me what the difference is in terms of code and compliance and all of that between a first story business in the promenade and a second story business? I think I'm a little confused on that still.
Yeah, no worries. So when the promenade was created about five years ago, a lot of the businesses, like offices or something that isn't open to everyone to walk into, were removed from the, from the down, downstairs and they were, they're now allowed upstairs. So let's say you want to meet with your insurance agent. Not everyone that's strolling down the street is going to pop into that, like they are a cafe or an arcade or something along those lines. So most of the uses along the promenade are intended for you to pop in and keep strolling down the street and shop, whereas if you want an office space, those are more what's allowed upstairs.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Walker.
Thank you. And I also wanted to thank Lance and Kate as well. I watched a few of the Planning Commission meetings and you guys have been burning the midnight oil on those as well. The removal of the civic org, or not civic organizations, they were previously fraternal organizations.
Membership.
Membership, thank you. That's been removed entirely. It can't be an accessory use now either.
That's the proposal currently. If there are any currently in the downtown as an accessory use, they, we would still be able to remain as an accessory use.
Gotcha. On the Planning Commission, the conversation was interesting. The idea was brought up about the planning behind Main Street and kind of the implementation of zoning and code to kind of work towards the vision of a walkable downtown being in place for years now. I think a decade ago is when that project kind of really got started or picked up momentum, probably earlier. They were just kind of asking into the open, is it, is it working the way we wanted it to? And it just kind of sent me down a rabbit hole of like, what is a more laissez-faire on the totally other end of the spectrum of very intense zoning and code? What would that look like? And I, I don't know what the answer to that is. It's just something that I, I wanted to bring to your guys' attention. Mayor, I know last meeting you mentioned that if we wanted to revisit that idea next year, I, I would be really interested in that. With the membership organizations, I, I oppose taking it off. I, I'd be for having them as primary uses, just because when it comes to the history of Monroe or just historic, appreciating, I guess, our, our history as a city, I think organizations like the one that comes to mind, the VFW, those are our, our community members who, who served and there's other organizations like that, whether it's the Rotary or, or another club. I think that that is a symbol of kind of a bygone time in, in America with civic participation. And I think that that's kind of what a, a Main Street could or, or used to be was something that kind of pulled people in, so just general ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move down the line, I just want to kind of share some thoughts on that. One, so when we put a lot of investment into downtown, the letter that you read here reflects a lot of that. The sidewalks were widened, the sidewalks were widened and then the council went ahead and also approved allowing businesses out there to actually use part of the sidewalk. One of the things that we heard back in 2008 and before 2008, when that comp plan was adopted, was people wanted us to be more like Snohomish. And they, they didn't want us to have, you know, be Snohomish, but they liked the idea of being able to walk, you know, down the sidewalks and as Amy put it, just pop into a store and things like that. And so the, the service organizations are not usually open where you can just drop in. And so the, the wide sidewalk area, which is called the promenade. Thank you. I haven't said that in a while. I've read it, but haven't said it out loud. But the promenade area is that area where we're trying to encourage people to walk along the sidewalk and you might park on one side of downtown, but you want to be able to, to walk and as you're going to, you know, Tyon Main or wherever it is you're going, see a business that's open and pop in there and take a look at crafts or take a look at furniture or take a look at something and interact with things. And the service organizations there being on the promenade don't offer that same sort of interaction that I think people were looking for at the time. So that's one of the reasons why, you know, I support the proposal that the Planning Commission has brought forward and I just want to share that with you. We've put a lot of investment in the downtown to encourage this interaction, especially coming out of COVID, trying to get people out and interact. It's been one of those things we've tried really hard. Again, go back to the letter, look at all the things we've done in the downtown. And sometimes it takes time for businesses to understand and building owners to understand that, hey, we can do some of these things. And yes, we can have tables out on the, you know, on the sidewalk and, and things like that. So anyway, those are some thoughts on that. And I know that we used to have those sorts of uses in the downtown, like on Lewis Street. I think at that time, there were uses where you could go in and you could have a meal and you could have a drink or something like that. So they weren't like the Rotary where it would just be open for, you know, at lunchtime a couple of days a week. They were, they were open. You'd get off work. I was never a member, but I'm guessing, so if anybody was a member, just correct me. But I'd imagine you'd get off work and you'd go to these, one of these social clubs and you'd have a drink, have something to eat and then afterwards you might wander around and take a look at other things in the downtown, which is a little different than just being a meeting place that's on the promenade, occupying space that one of these other uses could have. So those are some thoughts that I would share based on having worked in this for a little while. Doesn't mean that that's what the council needs to do. I'm just sharing with you what, what the intent of the downtown was and why I support what the Planning Commission is recommending. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions, but now I have three. First question for clarification, what we're proposing, these leagues or clubs could still be in the downtown, just not the promenade, correct?
So if they're currently in the downtown, for example, the VFW is operating as an art gallery with an accessory use of a membership organization, they're currently there, they would just be existing non-conforming. So it's not that we're asking them to leave. It's if a new one would come in, they wouldn't be allowed to enter as an accessory use.
Understood. Thank you.
Within the promenade or any use, any conditional, not permitted at all within the promenade. But the Historic Main, just wanted, I had Jody move it back to this slide, it would be permitted in Historic Main, so that's anything on the second story and anything along Lewis Street within the downtown.
Perfect, thank you. Because I, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Walker, and even down, down Snohomish has their legion or whatever, right there next to the Fish House. But it's down at the, at the end. It's not like maybe right in the heart or whatever, so I like what we're doing. I think we're on the right track. Second question, can you go back to, please, to the very last slide about the timeline? There. I didn't get a chance to check, but on the 30th, what, was there any comment during the hearings?
There were two public comments during the hearings. This was last night, you think I would remember exactly what they said. They weren't, they weren't generally opposed to it. It was just more basic comments. One was making sure that we, we checked this against our comp plan, which we have, which is in the packet. I just didn't present it during the presentation. And ultimately, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval to council.
Great, thanks. And then the third question, could you go back to the map where the Planning Commission's recommending one change or whatever?
Right.
The lines and kind of clarify that for me? I'm not, it wasn't clear to me like what necessarily the diff, that one, what the difference is besides colors, like what?
Yeah. So sometimes in our zoning maps, we use hashed marks as an overlay to show certain things. So in this situation, in our current map, where the red is, you're not seeing any orange because the second story of those parcels that are red is actually in the orange zone and not in the red zone. So moving over to the proposed, it still shows that orange for Historic Main and then it shows the hashed marks as the promenade. And there is a, in your packet, not on, not on here, but there's a footnote that's also displayed on the map describing what promenade is and where those boundaries are.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that I had that clear. That's all the questions I have. As far as comments, I, I really am thankful for all the work that you and staff have done and, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
Well said, Kevin. Thank you. I agree with the updates that we've got proposed here, the, regarding the membership clubs. They, as you said, they can still be downtown. Sorry, 50-year-old eyes can't see a thing. Okay, there are, there are still plenty of places in the downtown area where they could be at. I'm thinking of some cool old churches that have, you know, been up for sale and whatnot, even on Lewis. So, you know, they're still within walking zone, pretty, pretty awesome spaces. That'd be a very honorable use for them, I think. So I do think that your affection for the VFW is admirable and they wouldn't be kicked out of where they're at now. It doesn't change actually them at all. It just says forward in time, we realize that this may not be in our vision of what the downtown is. And also I do like the map update. I think it's so much easier to understand. I know I've had to explain that to people before and your visuals were very good on, you know, the, the red and the orange. I thought, that's great. This is better. So kudos to the Planning Commission. That looks great.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Thank you. My questions were along the same lines. My question was going to be, were we going to have to kick the VFW down around the corner or it's just that if they ever left, if they wanted to come back, they couldn't go where they are because they'd have to go outside the promenade area? Is that correct?
That, that's correct. So the way that it works is a non-conforming use, which they would become non-conforming. They couldn't, you can't expand a non-conformity, so they couldn't move to, you know, a larger space than where they currently are. And there's about, there's six months. So if they go away and another membership organization as an accessory use doesn't come in, then no others would be allowed to go in after that point. We, we would do not remove them.
Okay, does the fact that they have put a bunch of art on the walls as a kind of thing to stop and see, that not make them a business, but an art gallery and negate the thought of moving them?
Currently, their, their business license is for an art gallery and that's what they said they're operating as.
Okay.
And so. And so just in terms of speaking about a membership organization, they couldn't take as an accessory use, they couldn't take their art gallery with membership organization and move it to a different location within the promenade with this proposal.
Great. Thank you. And just to clarify, you know, for Councilmember Scarborough, they could go upstairs as an example, right? So they could still be like in the downtown on Main Street. It's just not on the promenade, which again, is just that first story. Yep, perfect. I just want to make sure there was clarity there. Thank you. I thought I saw another orange flag. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Since everybody's talking, I feel like I probably should too. Again, thanks for all of your guys' work. It's a ton of work and you have to attend all of our meetings. And I'm really sorry, but you're doing a great job. I like the first, the first floor thing that you had going up there. That definitely explains a lot to people. I like what the planning commission has proposed. Again, we're not kicking out the VFW. Memberships can go one story up, which is great. I love the idea of the promenade. That, I was part of that when I was in Planning Commission. And as you said, to be able to pop in those stores and restaurants and other things and having them always be open, I think is great. And VFW would be an art gallery. And I also like that change. Did I mention that? I like the change with the, with the lines through it. That definitely clears things up. When I first saw it, I was like, are we just changing colors for no reason? But it makes sense to me now. So again, I appreciate all your guys' work and I support what the planning commissioners are proposing.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you guys all for your comments. I appreciate it. I just like being devil's advocate and throwing out items just because I want to hear your guys' feedback. Planning Commissioners coming out and me, Amy, we're talking about removing the VFW. What happens to an organization that is in a space as an accessory use when the primary use, if they were to fold up shop? In that situation, does the accessory get removed?
Well, they would only be operate, having it that as an accessory use because it's incidental and subordinate to the primary use. So they only have the membership organization because they're an art gallery. So if the art gallery closes shop, then that is an accessory to that, but they would both close.
Okay. Thank you. And I couldn't recommend going back and listening to those planning commission meetings more. They were awesome. And Amy, you took, you provided so much good information, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
So the Monroe Historical Society is a membership organization, but we have a museum on the first floor. So that's an interesting situation. We are a membership organization and a nonprofit, so hmm, to museum.
Museums are permitted outright in the promenade.
Right. I'm just bringing it up as a, as an example of it's a conforming use. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
So based off our statement though, if it was a membership organization, if they just opened a museum, then they could use it?
Currently, they are, membership organi, oh, sorry, museums are permitted in, in that area and membership organizations are allowed as an accessory use.
Okay. So yeah, they opened, the primary was a museum.
That was correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've always seen, I mean, I've never thought about that being a membership organization, but it is a museum and it is open to the public. So, right, but it's open to the public. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you. We'll be bringing this back in two weeks for a public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 7.2. This is the Monroe 2044 final draft, chapters one, introduction two, vision and guiding principles, and something missing there? And 11 implement, okay, I see what, the commas are getting me. Okay. And 11 implementation and environmental review process with planning manager Tito Loeb.
Thank you. So we're getting close to the end. You have seen the first draft of everything I am presenting to you this evening, with the exception of chapter 11. I do want to give you a few housekeeping notes. We updated the entire document on September 24th, so what you were given in share file is a little bit outdated. It's not major changes. If you want to see the current everything package, it's actually on the project website. So the biggest changes is we are using the new logo as approved by J-Ray. It also includes some changes to the graphics. There were some text changes after conversations with the city attorney, which are, they're minor in nature, but those updates have also been made. So with that, I'm asking, would you like a brand new share file link? And who would like a hard copy besides Tammy? Two. Okay. You can have one. It's not a big deal. A link, okay.
Just the links. It's the new Die Hard line. Just a fax, please. I care about trees.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay, we're having too much fun. Okay, keep going.
So, and Jody brings up a really good, great point. Do you just want the chapters or do you also want the appendices for those who want the hard copy? It's big. Yes. Okay, just chapters. That's a great call. Yes, absolutely. And I'm, I'm going to go ahead and send you all the share file link just so you can read the current document. Fisher, it was the third, right? Next, I wanted to just update you. We are, we are continuing to receive edits and comments. And so the document is not going to change from what it looks like today on the website until November 1st, as we're preparing for your final public hearing. And so you will get the latest and greatest as part of your public hearing notice. We are still in the 60-day agency and public review period. So one of the appendices, I am starting to list out who the commenter is, what was the comment, did the city note it or implement it into the chapter? And so that will continue to be revised. And so I am hearing your comments. I am taking the feedback. You will not see it until, until November. Last comment on that. Okay, next slide. So I am starting and beginning with the schedule. The planning commission held their public hearing last night. They are working towards findings and a recommendation as of last night. We did not continue the hearing. For you all, we have three workshops tonight, and then on the 15th, we'll do land use, economic development, shoreline, parks and rec, and what am I forgetting? Six. Anyway, you will have those. And then on either the 22nd of October or the 29th, it's really dependent on if you wind up having a meeting on the 29th, you will have transportation, capital, facilities, and utilities. And so Jaka will be here with me on that evening. And then you have a public hearing already scheduled. We already sent postcard notices to all 4,000-plus property owners within the Monroe urban growth area, both the city as well as the unincorporated areas. Then we'll hopefully have discussion on November 19th. And then I'm hoping you'll be ready to take final action on December 3rd. But if not, you have one final meeting on December 12th for us to meet the state requirement of adoption by the end of 2024.
And we do have a flag. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Is this scheduled somewhere in that file you gave me? Would you please?
Absolutely. I will include it with the share file link with all the updated chapters for you.
Paper.
You got it.
And just to, just to underscore, I understood that this is going to be mailed off to residents also? Is that what I heard?
The postcard notice has already been sent out. They, according to my commissioners, they started receiving it in the mail a week and a half ago. It has been posted in the paper, the Herald. It is on the city's website. It was in this week, Monroe this week, last Friday. So we are doing our best to get the word out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anything else on this slide? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So just a quick refresher, Monroe has actually been planning since the 1960s. Our first GMA compliant comprehensive plan was adopted in 1994. This is nothing new to the city and we were really proactive with that first comprehensive plan in 94. The city determined that it was really important to have economic development and parks. So I just wanted to clarify, we're getting pretty good at it. On the right, the city has two subarea plans. That's the North Kelsey Commercial Area and then the Downtown Commercial Plan, which has already been discussed this evening. Next slide, please. And I'm really proud of this showing the plans of what they anticipated for growth, jobs, and housing is getting better and better in accuracy. And in general, this is a very general statement, the city has grown at about one to one and a half percent annually over the horizon. It has not been consistent. We had huge growth in the 1990s. There was a small bubble in the 2000s and we've had a recent resurgence with COVID. So again, I feel like the city is getting pretty good at this. We rely on a lot of information from Snohomish County, the Pugent Sound Regional Council, and Washington State Office of Financial Management. Next slide. And you're going to get tired of hearing this, but we are not doing this from a blank slate. We have guidelines to work with. The first is the Growth Management Act, which has been around since the 1990s. The, I have the Office of Financial Management on there just to explain that they're the ones that give us the forecasting. They give us a medium, a high, and a low. Snohomish County has consistently picked that middle, middle projection, which again, has been pretty accurate. The next layer of regulations is the Pugent Sound Regional Council. They are the multi-county planning agency for us. That's King, Kitsap, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties. Their document that we are required to be consistent with is Vision 2050. That's their policy document. Also, the regional transportation plan, that includes a handful of the city of Monroe projects, so we can get in line for funding as it comes through the state to Pugent Sound Regional Council. They also have an economic strategy. Then, as we start developing our plan, we do rely quite heavily on Snohomish County's data analysis, and that's in the form of the Buildable Lands Report. This takes all of the development that's occurred, not only in the city, but also in the unincorporated area. If you remember the last time we were around, one of the questions was, well, what is partially developed? It's vacant, partially developed, and redevelopable. So information is included in the information you will receive for your next update as an appendices. It includes all of the information that we use to start doing the analysis of how to accommodate our growth targets. So then after that, we work down to the county level, and most of that work is done through the Snohomish County tomorrow, which sounds like Jake participates in that legislative group. And that is in the form of not only the different organizations of Snohomish County tomorrow, but the county council officially adopts the countywide planning policies. And then finally, we get down to the city of Monroe. It's our comprehensive plan, and then that is interpreted through our zoning code and development regulations. Next slide. So our task right now is figuring out how to accommodate people, jobs, and housing. And the city of Monroe, from the Pugent Sound Regional Council, we're in a geography called cities and towns. Monroe is really not supposed to grow greater than, or take on more than about one and a half percent of the total growth, jobs, and housing through 2044. The region is really trying to focus growth where there are the big transportation investments, and that's link light rail and community transits, bus rapid transit. Those jurisdictions are being asked to take 65% of the growth. So I'm kind of, woo, Monroe does not have to do that. So this is what our task is. Next slide, please. And I just really want to reiterate, this has been a community-driven process. We have our guardrails given to us from the state, Pugent Sound Regional Council, and the county, but we went out to the community and said, here's this big task we have to accomplish last spring. And we were at, gosh, was that five pop-up events? We had the open house, we had an online survey. And so the information that we received from them helped us create the two land use scenarios, which you all saw last fall. That was then used to create our alternatives for the environmental review. Then we went out again this spring and said, this is our plan. Please start giving us feedback. So I just really wanted to remind you all, this has been very much community-driven. Next slide. So specifically tonight, I was starting off easy and just giving you a few chapters that I want to walk through. The first one is the general introduction to the comprehensive plan. The second chapter is the Imagine Monroe vision, and that worked through the guiding principles, which you all participated in those conversations earlier this year. And then the new chapter is chapter 11, implementation. So I'm going to stop there and just ask any questions. Does it look like you remember it? Do you have any concerns?
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. And then just a really brief overview of the environmental review process. Just reminding you, back in 2015, the city of Monroe last updated its comprehensive plan, and the city chose to do a full-blown environmental impact statement. So that looked at all the different alternatives that the city could use to accommodate the 2035 population, jobs, and housing. What we decided for this one is the 2015 plan was going to be the base, and then we were going to assess what needed to change beyond that. And so what we've done is called a supplemental environmental impact statement. And we're only looking at the new impacts. So the comparison is what we already did and the big changes. That huge document was issued back in June. We had a 30-day comment period, which closed. And during that time, we received comments from 11 different individuals. So the next step in that process is issuing the final environmental impact statement. So it will consolidate all of the comments we've received. It also incorporates the new transportation plan, the new water sewer and stormwater plan. So all that information will be presented to you as you're considering the final plan. It will also include responses to the 11 individuals who provided feedback to us. Currently, we are on track for that to be issued on October 14th, so just about two weeks, two weeks away. And then finally, back to the schedule. This is, again, is very high level. You've seen all these chapters before, so I just really want to make sure that you've had an opportunity to start reviewing, and if you're seeing things that you don't remember or we didn't catch something, this is your opportunity to redirect me, I guess. No? Okay.
Anything further?
All of that. I just want to give a shout out to Tammy. She is using her professional skills to provide comment and feedback. I am not an editor, so I really appreciate it.
Tammy, I just want to make certain you like serial comments, right?
Because, well, Oxford, however we're going to call it, but as long as we're good with serial com, okay, thank you. Otherwise, we were going to, we're going to take that away from you. So, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
I just have one final comment. If you have questions, feel free to send them to me. I just want to let you know, I will be responding to the entire council because my suspicion is you are not the only one who has that question, and I want to make sure that you are all hearing the same thing. So if you have a question, email me. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. We had a last-minute ad for an executive session that'll last until 4:00 AM tomorrow is not a true statement. I have nothing further this evening unless there's objection. We will be adjourned, and we are adjourned at 8:09 PM. Have a great And we are adjourned at 8:09 PM. Have a great.